Today is true. Can I sample all the Noblesville Council meeting to order for July 13th at 7:00? We get all rise, Ms. Wilds, would you do the pledging?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lees, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eyre.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wilds.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of our June 29th meeting?
Still move.
Second. Motion, a second, approve the minutes of our June 29th meeting, this is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Nine to zero.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Wilds.
I would move that we amend the agenda to consider moving miscellaneous number six to be read before ordinance number 53-07-21 and then reading ordinance 55-7-21 before ordinance 54-07-21.
There is a motion to amend the agenda, is there a second? Second. There's a motion to amend the agenda, and a second, there's a hand vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and a second, there's also a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Motion passes. Are there any comments or petitions from citizens, if you have something you'd like to say, there's a white card out front, fill that out and turn it into the clerk. Otherwise, Mr. Jensen.
Mr. President, can I go after?
Absolutely. We'll move on to the council committee reports.
So needy.
Rhodes Committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Rhodes Committee met on July 2nd, Mr. Eyre, Mr. O'Connor, and Mr. Smith, and I'm sorry, Mr. Smith was absent because he just had a new child, which was awesome, and myself were there. So, a lot was talked about, some of the, just the main quick items, 146th Street lighting, the administration had proved that, and I think we're going to be hearing a little bit more about that later on. The street rehabilitation is ongoing, but there were two things that were added to that, for those of you who didn't know, work along Pebblebrook was added, and also some trail repair along Kipford Street was added. Corporate campus infrastructure, so there is a project that is going to have a widening of Oleo Road from 141st to 146th, and is also going to be constructing a roundabout at 146th Street, there's going to be some, bids were opened on July 28th, and the contract was awarded to E&amp;B Paving, so we will have that moving forward. And finally, many people have talked a lot about the Carrigan Road Bridge, that has obviously been open, but lighting is going to be installed on that, hit soon by our city, and 146th Street over Allisonville Road interchange, the lighting is going to be expected for that in the fall of 2022, so next year.
Thank you. Any questions for the Rhodes Committee? Seeing none, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President, we met July 8th, myself, Greg O'Connor, and Megan Wilds were in attendance. Mike Hare discussed economic development area for Village of Federahill East and West, and he also talked to us about transfer of property for the Federahill parking lot. Matt Light discussed American Rescue Plan Act for 2021 and spending there, and Matt also talked to us about the additional appropriation, premium pay for the essential workers that we'll be discussing tonight. We, Matt Mitchell, Chief Matt Mitchell, Noblesville Fire Department, discussed additional appropriation for a new fire engine, and also a safe haven baby box for Fire Station 71 in downtown. Mr. Spalding talked an additional appropriation for new deputy controller position, and Sam Barris discussed additional appropriation for 146th Street, streetlights. Deputy Chief Brad Arnold and Chief of Police talked about additional appropriation for the public, the police department to build out a de-escalation training room in downtown station, and they also discussed a lease for a new police station annex down the road on Ninth Street that will move some of their personnel down there to take care of some space problems in that building. Other than that, the claims do come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the claims?
Still move.
Second. A motion to approve the claims, and a second, there's a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Mr. Mayor, do you have your notes together?
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate you buying me a few minutes of time there, I was trying to condense my notes to make sure I was efficient with my time this evening, so it's great to be with all of you. I have two items I'd like to just briefly discuss with you, and actually, it worked well to present after Mr. Davis, because a lot of tonight's agenda, it revolves around fiscal actions in front of the county, or the council this evening. There really are two buckets that we're focused on here tonight, the first of which I will leave up to Mr. Light, Deputy Mayor Light, to go over with the ARPA funds, you will see in front of you tonight, a plan outlining our usage of those funds, and Mr. Light can go over that in detail with you, but just a quick history for the record, as you recall, back in March, we were given guidance about our dollars that would be allotted to us, totaling in the tune of roughly 13.4 million dollars, with very specific guidelines on where that could be used, we went to work immediately to kind of diligently lay out a plan for those dollars, and then in May, when Treasury gave their final guidelines, we actually are receiving 6.2 million dollars, which is a little bit of a change from the original Treasury guidelines, I can tell you, obviously, that's disappointing for the City of Noblesville, I think we are very strong fiscal stewards of tax dollars, and we have a lot of great opportunities to invest in our city going forward, we are going on record with the U.S. Department of Treasury voicing our concern about that reduction, that'll be going into Treasury this week, but alas, we will do the best we can with the dollars that we have been allotted, and you'll hear a plan for that tonight. One of those areas that you'll see is some bonuses for essential workers and employees in the City of Noblesville, I wanted to speak on that, because obviously, at the end of the day, that was our request from the administration, and my individual request, in 2020, you recall, when we were crafting a budget, we were one of the only cities in Hamilton County not to give any raises in '21, and I know that you were all in agreement with that, because we certainly weren't sure of where our fiscal situation would be. That is why we have requested that some of these dollars from the ARPA dollars be pointed towards those bonuses for our city employees, you'll see the different allotments for police and fire, and a different allotment for civilian employees, I think it's a great way to recognize those folks who really went above and beyond during the pandemic, and it is the proper use of our ARPA dollars, so I appreciate your consideration of not only that plan tonight that Deputy Mayor Light will go over, but that fiscal action for those bonuses as well. Additionally, you'll see some additional appropriations that Mr. Davis went over, we feel from the administrative side, obviously, we had a lean budget with your guidance in 2021, we feel very, we feel confident of where we are in a fiscal situation currently, and are able to make some investments into some of the long-term community needs in very, very specific targeted ways, and you'll hear from not only members of the administration, but members of the council tonight, as we propose those, but I want to be very clear that these dollars that we're asking to appropriate tonight are being paid for by using excess reserves from 2020, and again, I appreciate your guidance in allowing us to find ourselves in that position, to be able to use those reserves, as well as stronger-than-forecasted revenues that we've seen in 2021, so I'm proud of the fact that we're in a position that we are tonight to make those investments, and for you to even consider those, I imagine there's cities all across the country that would be very envious of the position that we're in here in the City of Noblesville, so appreciate your consideration of all those fiscal actions this evening. The final thing I'd like to mention, as you know, in May of this year, we launched a citywide Noblesville Wellbeing Coalition in conjunction with Noblesville Schools, Dr. Niedermeyer and I chaired that coalition, one of the first steps we took was this week, we launched a citywide wellness survey, we want to encourage every resident in the City of Noblesville to take a few minutes out of their day, visit the city's Facebook page, Instagram page, Twitter page, or the city website, you can see that survey, our goal is to really get a baseline of where our community overall wellness is currently, and in order to do that, we need folks to jump in and take that survey, I can tell you, Director Gaylord behind me told me earlier today, within about 18 hours of opening the survey, we've already had 650 folks take it, which is a great, great step in the right direction, but obviously, we, it's going to be open for at least 30 days, so we'd like to see folks from all corners of our community take a few minutes to let us know where they are in this anonymous survey, so we can plan accordingly as we go forward with some of our wellness initiatives around mental health and wellness in the City of Noblesville. So, appreciate Emily Gaylord and her team for putting that survey together, and I'm excited to review the results, so we can have an action plan going forward. Is that my timer, really? What was that?
Not me. Talk to Emily.
I was like, what did I do? All right, I'm done, that's all I had.
How do we find?
I thought that was a Darren Peterson thing, I was like, all right, very funny.
You gotta fill out the white card, don't you? How do we find the survey?
The survey, yes, the survey is on the city's Facebook page, as well as the city's website, Instagram, and Twitter.
Okay.
All the social media platforms, so, any other questions?
Any questions?
You don't have time for any, do you?
No, that's true. If there are, ask the President Peterson.
Good to meet you again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, for that update, catch our breath here. Really? I wish I'd have thought of it, though. Counsel to consider ordinance 47-06-21, and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund. This is Jeff Spalding and Matt Light, I believe.
Actually, maybe Matt Mitchell.
Oh, no?
Yes.
That's the next one.
Oh. This is, this is the...
And it's Chief Mitchell.
Second reading on the...
Yeah, this is second reading on a additional appropriation.
All right, I'm just gonna just see what happens, go ahead.
Second reading on an additional appropriation request started last council meeting, and it's actually, as I described it then, it is really a budget correction, this is just, again, as we improve our workforce planning and budgeting, there are issues, this is specifically related to acting in capacity and holiday pay, these are existing types of pay that are happening in the Fire Department, but just weren't budgeted for correctly in the adopted budget, that issue was recognized recently, and this is just to correct it, so that the budget reflects those pays correctly.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding or Matt Mitchell?
Mr. President.
Yeah.
I move we approve 47-06...
I gotta open the public hearing.
Over the public hearing.
I'm gonna open the public hearing up for ordinance 47-06-21.
Mr. President, seeing no one coming forward from the public, I recommend or move that we close the public hearing for 47-06-21.
Second. There's a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 47-06-21, and a second, there's a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, nine oh. Mr. Eyre, you're up.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve 47-021, ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 47-06-21, and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nay, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New ordinance for discussion, counsel to consider ordinance 48-07-21, and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Fire Cumulative Capital Fund for funding a new fire engine and establishing a public hearing.
Moved to introduce.
Second. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and this is the first of an array of items that are associated with the things that the mayor just referenced and talked about as we seek to address important operational needs for various city departments, and this one is for funding for the purchase of a fire engine, to be funded in this case with reserves currently in the cumulative, the Fire Cumulative Capital Fund, which by its name, you can tell that's kind of the purpose of that fund, and if you have, you know, it's essentially trying to get us on, back onto the appropriate replacement cycle as defined by the Fire Department, and if you have questions about the engine or the need for it, I believe Chief Mitchell is here to answer those questions.
Right there.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding or Mr. Mitchell?
I just have one, Mr. President, for Chief Mitchell, I'm trying to read through here, is this, is this an engine that is already built and ready to go, and is here, and how does it, when will it be here, I guess?
Yeah, Matt Mitchell representing the Fire Department, we will place the order after we have the funding approval from the council, and then border works approval for a change order, because we're actually ordering two engines at the same time, which is going to capture a $30,000 savings for us, so we will end up ordering that truck, and it's about a 300-day build time, so we'll receive it sometime in the next summer, which is pretty standard.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the engine you're replacing, I think it's stated somewhere in here, Chief, but what's the age on that engine?
2004, so, we still have four 2004 trucks in the fleet, so you approved via the budgetary process for 2021, the purchase of an engine in 2021, so that replaces one of the 04s, as Mr. Spalding indicated, this second truck will replace another 2004 engine and get us back on track with our replacement schedule, because we had a little hiccup in 2020, so...
The life expectancy on an engine?
We generally like to replace them every 12 years, so the 2004s, we are way behind.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, I would move that we establish a public hearing for ordinance 48-07-21 at our next meeting.
Second. Motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance 48-07-21 at the next meeting, and a second, there's a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance 47, 49-07-21, and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for funding a safe haven baby box and establish a public hearing.
Moved to introduce.
Second.
Will Hampton and Jeff Spalding.
Go ahead, Mr. Spalding, if you want to start.
Yeah, and again, as you can see from the appropriation action, this is funds being appropriated to the Fire Department for a cost that wasn't even contemplated at the time the 2021 budget was prepared, so that's why we're here before you today, asking that, and again, it's part of the mayor's package, and I think Counselor Hampton can probably talk more intelligently about the request than I, or somebody from the Fire Department as well.
Not sure more intelligently, I can talk longer about it. Thank you, Mr. Spalding. The idea of bringing a safe haven baby box to Noblesville was first brought to my attention by Our Lady of Grace parishioner Ted Johnson, who's here with us tonight, Mr. Johnson, glad to see you here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson and other members of the OLG Knights of Columbus chapter. We invited Mr. Johnson and Safe Haven founder Monica Kelsey to meet with Mayor Jensen and Fire Chief Matt Mitchell, from there, it became apparent that this would be a good idea for Noblesville. The Safe Haven Baby Box would be installed downtown at Fire Station 71, the way it works is a baby can be dropped off into a temperature-controlled box, interior alarms are sounded to 911 and inside the firehouse, no cameras, it's a total anonymous event that allows a woman to make sure that the baby is cared for. Bottom line, the Safe Haven Baby Box program is saving lives, 57 babies have been saved since the program started, six alone in 2020. Indiana's Safe Haven law allows the anonymous surrender of an infant 30 days or younger without prosecution at a Fire Department, hospital, or emergency medical service station, so long as there are no signs of intentional abuse or neglect. Monica Kelsey started the program after she discovered, as an adult, that she was nearly aborted and abandoned as a child. She started the program, and she is a living testament to adoption and foster care, and that every single life is precious. Thank you, Mayor Jensen, thank you, Chief Mitchell, and the council for considering ordinance 49-07-21, a one-time $15,000 additional appropriation for the Safe Haven Baby Box to be installed in Noblesville.
Any questions? Hold on a second, Mr. Hampton.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would move that we establish a public hearing for ordinance 49-07-21 at our next meeting.
Second.
There's a motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance 49-07-21 at the next meeting, and a second, there's a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
And counsel to consider ordinance 50-07-21, and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for funding a new deputy controller position and establishing a public hearing, Jeff Spalding and Greg O'Connor.
Well, I can start by kind of formally saying, obviously, this is a, this is a request that I...
Motion to introduce.
This is, this is a...
I need a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
This is a request that I'm obviously familiar with, because it's coming for my department, and as, you know, described in the ordinance, it's for providing, you know, funding this year in 2021 to support the hiring of a new position that will then be requested in the 2022 budget, and I didn't know if Counselor O'Connor wanted to say more about it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Spaulding. Having been a member of the Finance Committee for the last number of years, we started a conversation, I want to say, four years ago about trying to add some additional muscle to the Office of Finance and Accounting and principally due to the fact that when I moved here, there were about seventeen thousand people in the population, and now there's sixty-five thousand. And so if you do a little bit of math, and that's over a thirty-year period, but the amount of work and the complexity of work that's happening now in the OFA office is far greater than it was several years ago. And as we continue to move forward in the next decade, there's going to be more activity in that regard. So this deputy controller position, which I think we've thought was needed for at least a couple of years now, will allow us to expand some of the things that we're doing. Perhaps more critically, we're looking at internal controls as to what we do on a daily basis from an organizational perspective. So this individual will be, will be able to come in and fulfill and, and work on some of these things that frankly, not that they've been overlooked or not focused on, but there's a lot, a lot of tasks involved, particularly when you get into bond transactions, et cetera. So I think the Finance Committee is supportive of this. I think it's something that we need to do. We need to, we just need to add some more brain power and some capability to the OFA office. So I am very much supportive of our moving forward with this add to staff. So, Mr. Spaulding, anything you'd like to add?
The only thing I can say that short and sweet, I almost would say nothing. But one thing, too, that helps frame it up a bit is that, you know, the office as originally constituted, when it was a clerk treasurer's office, was more in essence what people would think of in a larger company as an accounts payable department. And what we're trying to do is build it into a, you know, you know, fully functioning sophisticated central finance function for a pretty complex organization. And so that's why we're looking for a position like this. And one of the basic minimum requirements for the position will be a certified public accountant designation, which we do not have on staff now.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. O'Connor or Mr. Spaulding?
President.
Yes.
I would move that we establish a public hearing for ordinance fifty dash zero seven dash twenty-one at our next meeting.
Second.
Motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance fifty oh seven twenty-one at the next meeting. In a second, does a hand vote. All is in favor. Raise your right hand. Nine oh. Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance fifty-one oh seven twenty-one, an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund for funding streetlights on Hundred Forty-Sixth Street from Cumberland Road to Bergen Boulevard and establishing a public hearing. Mr. Spaulding and Mr. O'Connor again.
Again, yet another item that's on the, you know, mayor's.
Motion to introduce.
I need to pause for that, don't I? All right.
Again, yet another item on the, the mayor's list of items to be addressed that were, you know, contemplated pre-COVID but held off on. And I guess the notable distinction here is that the funding source will be the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund as opposed to the general fund. And other folks, again, are more familiar with the, with the issue than I and can talk about the need for the, this action to replace the lighting.
Mr. President, in the meeting where we, the last Finance Committee meeting where we talked about this, I actually gave them one of these because we've been working on this for like four years, trying to get to the point where we had some funding to actually make this happen. And rightfully so. There's priorities when you're doing budgets and looking at different allocations of funds. And yet, the streetlights on Hundred Forty-Sixth Street, half of them weren't functioning. So from just an overall safety perspective, we probably have looked at this for four years now. And now that we have a little additional money in the reserves that the mayor referenced, we're going to light these intersections along Hundred Forty-Sixth Street. And the good news is we'll make this investment. And then on a go-forward basis, Duke Energy will actually maintain these, these lights for us. So I think it's a long time coming. I know several of my constituents out in that area are very desirous and will be pleased to see that we're actually going to move forward with this. So I'm excited. That's about as excited as I get.
Do you give a cheer again?
So I gave it this, but.
Is that a dance or a cheer? What is that?
That's as close as I get to doing the Macarena. So I, this, this is something that will make a, I think it'll make a significant difference. And, and the polls for Ms. Wiles will be black with a decorative base. So I think their Cobra lights, they'll look a little different. But nonetheless, we'll accomplish, purpose intended, which is to improve the lighting and safety around those intersections. And I'll give some thanks to Ally Krupsky, who I think is here, that I've pestered for the last year and a half about these lights. But so you can tell I'm really passionate about this. I guess I'll let Mr. Spaulding have it.
I'm not afraid to buzz you as I did the mayor, so. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Spaulding or Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we establish a public hearing at our next meeting for fifty-one dash zero seven dash twenty-one.
Second.
There's a motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance fifty-one oh seven twenty-one at the next meeting. In a second, all is in favor. Raise your hand. Nine oh. Thank you. I'm gonna pause this time. We're counsel to consider ordinance fifty-two oh seven twenty-one, an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for funding a police de-escalation training room and establishing a public hearing.
Moved to introduce.
Second.
Mr. Spaulding and Mark Boyce.
Thank you. And I was gonna pause, too. Again, another on the, the, the list of items that is part of the, the mayor's program here. And I would say probably the most unique or interesting thing about this is it's an escalation of de-escalation training. We actually had funding for some level of de-escalation training in the twenty twenty-one budget. And the Police Department is seeking to expand on that plan for operational reasons that they have. And Counselor Boyce, you can make some comments on it, too.
Well, Chief Mann is here, so he can obviously speak to this much better than I can. But I'd just really quickly say, we all know violent crime in these situations are unfortunately on the rise in the nationwide arena. And Lieutenant Bruce Barnes and I just had a conversation a week before about the scrutiny that all of our officers are under. And the scrutiny is just going up exponentially throughout his career. And so I think it's now even more important than ever that our officers are equipped to be able to handle these situations better than they ever have. And so training, I think, is a key to that. Counselor Davis and I were able to go through some similar with this, although much more outdated training, but similar to what we'd be looking at here. And I think that both of us learned two things. One, we are very glad that I'm not out on the streets myself because I did not protect Mr. Davis, and he unfortunately died in the training. And secondly, the training is key. I mean, it is amazing. My heart was going crazy. It was really fascinating, but I think I learned a ton. And so I know that our officers, the more that they can go through the training, just the better equipped they'll be to handle these situations, God forbid, if they happen, so.
Chief?
Counsel, Chief John Mann, Noblesville Police Department. Appreciate being here in front of you to talk about this. It is an ask, and we understand that Noblesville is lucky with our police department that a lot of training is expected. The platform has been set of what we do here in Noblesville. I've talked about it several times in open forums with community meetings and other meetings that I attend about our standard and our level of training that we have here in Noblesville compared to other agencies across the state. We're fortunate to be able to do that. That doesn't come free. That comes at a cost. And the residents and business people of Noblesville, the council of Noblesville, the administration of Noblesville recognizes that and gives us the opportunity. The thing that we're talking about, the item here, we're talking about is de-escalation. It's a, a training simulator for firearms. Right now, as we train, we rent that, I guess, simulator, the, the whole screen, everything involved with it. We rent that once a year now for a week. And then we try to cram everybody in to the week's rental that we have for that. That would open the door wide open for us. Where we want to put it in the basement is even a better situation than what we originally planned of where we could put it within our own building. Here in the basement of City Hall would allow us twenty-four seven access to it. There are some hurdles that we have to overcome. Some of that is with the build-out, has to do with insulation, has to do with sound deadening. So we're not screaming throughout the whole building here when we're trying to do business. But it does allow our shifts to do training, not just in a planned ahead scenario block of training like we're used to, but if we actually have time on shift, we can pull officers aside, run them through scenarios, and maybe take a half hour, maybe take an hour within their shift. We are, we are expecting our training level to increase overall, but then the training and de-escalation and firearms specifically to really go through the roof comparatively speaking to other departments in our area.
Thank you. Is this something the public can use as well and other, other aspects? It's not just for the police, correct?
Sure. It's a, we will, there'll be a civilian component that we'll bring into there. What we've talked about are places that have interaction with, I guess, could be angry or disgruntled customers. We will train, or like our civilians at the front desk. Now, they won't, the scenarios won't be firearms-based, but it will be in a de-escalation based. And how they talk to the screens that are provided will determine how that scenario goes. And that's the key factor with what we're asking for. So this scenario, and the one that you guys saw, was a single screen, looks just about like that up there. And then the officer interacts with that screen. The one that we're providing puts you in a hundred and eighty-degree arena. So it really, it forces our officers to keep their head on a swivel and to deal with different things that are coming at them at the same time. So with those screens, we can do the same with civilians, whether it's somebody that's complaining in front of them, and then from another area, another complaint comes in, how they talk and interact. Hopefully, we'll de-escalate that, and then they can see the proof of how they are acting or how they are doing as it plays out right in front of them. This new product gives us the ability to do that. We can also bring members of the public in. The way that we have it designed in the basement, there will be a seating or a viewing area to where they can watch officers come in. They can actually partake in it themselves. So yes, once we get this up and going, we will probably be spending fifty-fifty. Fifty percent of our time training and fifty percent training the community, training in-house, people within our own departments on different de-escalation techniques as we can do.
I hope everybody does better than myself.
We staged it that way.
Do we all get to train with Mr. Davis? Mr. Hampton.
Is there a, and this is not meant to be comical, it's a real question. Is there a de-escalation of like road rage or anything like that?
Yeah, we can, we can design the scenarios. However, that's one of the beauties about this product itself. We can even overlay the video. So if we're gonna do an active shooter in a school, we can go into our schools and overlay the video onto the content. So you're not just walking into, say, a school in California, or if you're doing a park scene or something like that, we can actually create it so that it, it works here for what we're seeing in Noblesville. So yeah, it's, that possibility is there.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Chief Mann, you talked as a Finance Committee. Can you expand a little bit and tell the council about how many hours our officers have to train?
Sure. So as, to stay certified as an officer within the state of Indiana, which governs our ability to serve as a police officer, our state certification, that amount of training hours is twenty-four a year. So there's various topics they mandate. They may come in and mandate that two of those hours have to be in domestic violence, two of those hours have to be in firearms. But that's twenty-four a year that all that officer has to have to keep that certification. In twenty nineteen, we were two hundred and thirty-six hours per officer. That was our level versus what the state level is. So you can imagine the difference is, is incredible. Where I came from with Metro, twenty-four is the standard. You might get twenty-six, you may get twenty-eight. Maybe on a good year, you hit thirty, thirty-five hours, depending on what you were doing. But for us to average per officer that level, ooh, it's a, it is really a lot. It says a lot about the officers that go through the training, and it says a lot about the administration and the city of what they expect in our officers when it comes to training. So I can imagine, once we get this in place, I, I'll come back with a report, but I'd love to see where we continue to push that bar. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Mr. President, I would move that we establish a public hearing for ordinance fifty-two dash zero seven dash twenty-one at our next meeting.
Second.
Motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance fifty-two oh seven twenty-one at the next meeting. In a second, does a hand vote. All is in favor, raise your right hand. Nine, zero. Miscellaneous number six. Counsel to consider resolution RC forty-four twenty-one, a resolution adopting a plan for distribution of the proceeds of the city's grant from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Mr. Light.
Thank you, President Peterson and members of the council, Matt Light, Deputy Mayor. And we appreciate your consideration of this plan for using the proceeds of the American Rescue Plan that the mayor previewed in his comments earlier. Just a reminder, an overview of some of the requirements for the use, tracking and reporting of the funds that are coming from the ARP. The first step is to create a fund, a dedicated fund, where these dollars will be deposited, and they'll be housed until they're used. We did that. You accomplished that in April. The step, the second step is to adopt a usage plan. That's what we're proposing to you tonight. That can be amended as many times as you deem prudent. And then the third step is to appropriate specific uses consistent with the plan. And we have one of those that will follow this, this resolution involving the premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work. And then obviously, to use the funds consistent with the plan and the appropriations that are approved by council and to document those usages for auto purposes going forward. So this plan includes a lot of language that tracks with the parameters of the American Rescue Plan, the prohibitions on use, the requirements for making certain findings for spending it in certain categories. And in most ways, it really sets a high-level framework that can be adjusted if needed going forward. But we have one area where we've gotten specific, and that's the area involving premium pay for essential workers. So there are four category, categories of contemplated usage in this plan. The first one, as the mayor talked about, is, is premium pay for essential work during the pandemic. So we analyzed the parameters there and the Treasury guidance and the statute, looked at what some other communities were doing, looked at the amount of dollars that we're receiving based on the updated figure, and ended up settling on a two-dollar-per-hour premium pay amount for all essential work that was performed. And the definition of essential work is really kind of a risk-based one. It involved, you know, working with members of the public in your job, handling matters that were received from the public, things that, you know, contributed to risk of contracting the COVID-nineteen virus. And we established a cap of fourteen hundred dollars for civilian employees and a cap of twenty-four hundred dollars for public safety professionals. And we wanted to provide more for our public safety professionals because of the additional risks that they faced. And, and we thought that that was an overall appropriate amount to settle upon. So this covers all employees that worked enough hours under the definition of essential work up towards those caps. So for, for individuals that maybe joined the city of Noblesville midstream, if you will, that will be prorated based on the amount of hours. And we're in the process of confirming those figures with our department heads and our departments. This does not include elected officials. It's employees only. The second category of usage in, in the plan is for wastewater infrastructure, specifically Wayne Township sewer connections that you're all very familiar with. And there's another, there was an agenda item on the Board of Works this morning that is moving forward, the multifaceted strategy in that regard. The third item is stormwater and drainage infrastructure. The third item is stormwater and drainage infrastructure work, and specifically the stormwater and drainage work for Phase One of the Pleasant Street project, which will assist in our financing strategy for that top infrastructure project. And the fourth is essentially a placeholder that gives us some flexibility. It's revenue reduction. There's a category in the American Rescue Plan that allows for governmental units to determine how much revenue they lost because of the economic disruptions from the COVID pandemic. There's a formula in the treasury guidance that assumes a certain rate of growth that you can compare your revenues against, and if you can document and make those determinations, you can essentially spend those dollars for any governmental purpose. Now, we don't think that we'll necessarily need to use that fourth category because we think we'll, we will be able to and want to be able to use them on those first three, but we thought it was prudent to include that fourth category, again, as a placeholder and to provide some flexibility. So as we work through the Wayne Township Sewer and Pleasant Street stormwater details, we'll be back in front of you most likely with a request for an additional appropriation for those expenditures to continue spending the dollars according to this plan. The last thing that I'll mention is that these dollars all have to be obligated by the end of 2024 and then spent by the end of 2026. But we don't anticipate issues with doing that, based on all the needs that you're very familiar with. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Light.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Light, this resolution, I think there's some flexibility here, is there not? If we decide to do something different within the context of the use of the funds, we'd have the capability to make an amendment to it, so it's somewhat fluid.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that makes a lot of sense, given that there's a, you know, window of time within which these funds can be spent, so circumstances could change in Noblesville, and we'll continue to work with you on those items, and if we think an adjustment's appropriate, or if you think an adjustment's appropriate, that can be done.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve resolution RC-44-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve resolution RC 4421. In a second, is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine, oh. Council to consider ordinance 530721 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for funding premium pay for essential workers under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021, and establishing a public hearing.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
All right, well, this appropriation action before you is directly related to that resolution that Mr. Light just presented, and hearing the snicker about the name of the fund, I will say this, that was the name defined for us by the State Board of Accounts, which is a pretty long name, I do agree. And anyway, what this action does is it's the first fiscal action that we'll be taking within the confines of that resolution, and that resolution, as Mr. Light described, is one of the requirements that's put in place for the ARPA funds. Another requirement that is more related to state law is that in Indiana, you know, once you establish the eligible uses as you have in that resolution, then to actually execute on an eligible use, the monies have to be appropriated, and that's what this action does for one specific thing within that plan, which is the premium pay for essential workers item. And as described in the ordinance, the criteria that has been established is a, you know, work done over a pre-specified period of time during the pandemic at a premium pay amount of $2 per hour with a maximum number of hours that you can receive that premium pay based on two different levels, based on the position that the employee is in. And if you have any further questions about that, I can try to field them.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I don't have a question, I just have more of a comment, that this is an opportunity for us to thank our employees who came to work every day and put themselves on the line. There are other municipalities that have provided these bonuses as well. The county, for example, that received 10x the amount of ARPA funds, they've given their employees a $3,000 bonus, so I think that this is a wise use of these dollars, and again, to recognize and reward our employees who went the extra distance during this challenging time.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move that we establish a public hearing for 53-07-21 at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance 530721 at the next meeting. In a second, is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine, oh. Council to consider ordinance 550721 and ordinance amending ordinance 260920A as salary ordinance for adopted officials, appointed officials, and employees of the city of Noblesville for 2021.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Holly Ramone.
Holly Ramone, Human Resources Director. Good evening. As described in your attached letter, this is part of the mayor's proposed mid-year budget adjustments, and it includes a 2% mid-year adjustment for full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees. It also includes a title change only for the Community and Economic Development Director position for a new title of Community Development Director. A request for the new position with the Office of Finance and Accounting for Deputy Controller. And then on page five, under section three, language has been added to include that bonuses shall be paid in addition to the maximum amounts that are indicated on the salary ordinance. We do also request at this time for your consideration to pass this ordinance on first reading. Doing so would allow us to implement the pay increase as of the first pay day in August. So thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
President, I would move that we waive the rules and pass ordinance number 55-07-21 on first reading.
Second.
Is a motion to waive the rules and pass this on the first reading. In a second, is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine, oh. Do we need to amend this also?
Mr. O'Connor had brought it to our attention that the salary ordinance actually states it would begin the first, as of the first day of January 2021. I can make that adjustment to state the first pay of August 2021.
Okay. So we have a motion or?
Motion to amend. And, Mr. President, I'd move that we amend 55-07-21 to read section one that from the first pay of August 2021, and everything else is submitted.
Second.
There's a motion to amend. Is this also a hand vote? Motion to amend this ordinance. In a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine, oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance 55-07-21 and ordinance amending ordinance 260920A as amended.
That's good, very good.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 550721 as amended. In a second, this is a roll call vote.
Voice?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Miles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ayes, your ownay, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 540721 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for funding a police station annex and establishing a public hearing.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Yes, and this is the last of the items that are before you tonight that is associated with that plan that the mayor laid out, and again, it's an item that is, you know, the type of thing that there's been, you know, talk and concern about in terms of space for our growing police force that, leading into the pandemic, that was something that kind of had to be put on hold, but now that we find ourselves in a better financial situation, it's an issue that can be addressed, and I would leave it to Chief Man or someone from the Police Department to talk a little bit more about the need and the rationale behind your proposal.
Mr. Voice, I'm sorry, I-
Oh, no, that's fine.
As chairman of the Public Safety Committee, would you like to add?
I didn't have much for this one. I was just going to say, I mean, this department was built in 1992, we had 30 officers. Now, in 2021, we have three times that with 95 officers, and I think one of the first things I heard when I came on to council, what was it, 15 years ago, Greg, 14 years ago that we came on?
Yes.
Was from the late Chief Russell, how we didn't have enough space in the department, and then I heard the same thing from Chief Jowlett, and now we, obviously, no one here, even worse from Chief Man as we continue to grow. So I don't think, I think you almost have to be living under a rock to not realize that there's a serious problem with space over there, so should kind of be able to speak for itself.
Man?
Council John Mann, Noblesville Chief. Yes, as, as it was alluded to, it was built for 30 officers. We make do and don't use it as an excuse, but the annex will definitely help out. We'll move our professional standards over. That whole division will move over along with Noble Act. It'll give us the ability with Noble Act to now combine resources between police and fire, to set at the same desk, same office, and communicate. Right now, they're, they're kind of working out of different firehouses and different fire stations, and our Noble Act officer, Ben Luger, just kind of works a lot out of his car and wherever he can grab an office. It'll give him that space. What it'll also do for the headquarters that we currently have, it'll move our deputy prosecutor who we have on site, part-time, it'll move her into an office. Right now, she's kind of in a modified closet, so that'd be nice to get her into a full-size office. But I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Chief Man, this lease is just for the end of this year, just through this year? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you see that?
Thank you. I mean, the lease will continue on, but we're just funding the rest of this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we establish a public hearing for ordinance 54-07-21 at our next meeting.
Second.
Motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance 540721 at the next meeting. In a second, is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine, oh. Thank you. Miscellaneous number one. Council to consider resolution RC 3921 a resolution approving the transfer of certain real property to the Noblesville Community Development Corporation. Mr. Howard.
This item and the next item are some of the ongoing steps in the Village at Federal Hill project, put that, that project in place. There's been a little bit of a pause in the starting date for that, but we're going to go ahead and get as many of these approvals in place as possible, so when we're ready to go, it'll be there. This resolution concerns, as has been before you in a different form, this concerns the parking lot at the northeast corner of Nixon and Logan Street. It's where the new parking garage will be and wrapped with Phase One of the Village at Federal Hill project. As you recall, that was part of the lease premises in the 2015 part bond. We had to substitute some collateral, and that piece isn't now in the name of the city. This resolution allows the mayor, the controller, and the clerk to execute a deed to convey this entire 1.43-acre parcel to the Community Development, Noblesville Community Development Corporation. The Noblesville Community Development Corporation will retain title for the footprint of the parking garage, and the surrounding area will be conveyed to the developer, Old Town Development, or an entity selected by them. So this has been before you in other forms, but I think that's, this is the last step for this particular piece of real estate until we get into the final bond documents. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Howard?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move that we approve resolution RC-39-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve resolution RC 3921. In a second, is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine, oh. Council to consider, but motion passes, sir. Council to consider resolution RC 4021 a resolution regarding approval of the creation of Village at Federal Hill allocation area east and Village at Federal Hill allocation area west. Mr. Howard.
You have seen the subject matter of this particular resolution in the past, but there is one, this is an additional approval that is required by statute. Essentially, the private project will be created in two TIF districts. One will be the Village at Federal Hill East, East District, which is the 1.43 acre that we, parcel that we just talked about, the Phase One, the parking garage and the private use. The other parcel will be on the west side of Nixon Street. It will initially include the, our old friend, the Mexican restaurant, the parking behind there, the area where there was a house that's been demolished, and another piece of ground that you will see in a vacation proceeding fairly soon. It will, this will be the Village at Federal Hill West allocation area, and when the Wendy's has been acquired and demolished, that Wendy's site will be then added to the Village at Federal Hill West allocation area, but for financial reasons, we're not transferring it or in putting it in the TIF district at this time, waiting for the demolition and reduction in that parcel. And again, these will allow the developer-backed bonds to be issued as authorized by your initial development agreement in two separate series. There's been some conversations, maybe it would be consolidated, but this makes it flexible so we can do it either way. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
The piece of property in the northeast corner is currently owned by the city. You're just talking about vacating the portion of the-
Well, according to the tax records, it doesn't exist. There is not a number on it. I am presuming, Mr. Peterson, that that was an excess parcel or an excess unused part of a parcel acquired to construct Logan Street in 88 at that time, and it was never given a parcel ID number, et cetera, so it's just a cleanup, and it will be vacated to the contiguous landowner as part of Phase Two of the project.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move we approve resolution RC 40-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve art, resolution RC 4021. In a second, is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine, oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council to consider resolution RC 4121 a resolution confirming approval of a waiver of non-compliance concerning a real property tax abatement for Performance Marketing Group, LLC. Kimmy Smith.
Good evening. Yes, this resolution is for waiver of non-compliance for Performance Marketing Group. They did not return their annual compliance form by the deadline and have asked that that be reinstated, that real property abatement be reinstated for 2021, page 22. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any, or ask for your approval on this item.
Any questions? Seeing none. Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing for Resolution RC-4121.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing for RC-41-21.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for Resolution RC-4121 in a second. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Sorry, nine oh. Let me look that way first. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC-41-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution RC-4121 in a second. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Counsel to consider Resolution RC-4221 a resolution confirming approval of a waiver of noncompliance concerning a real property tax abatement for ProGuard Products LLC. Amy Smith.
This resolution for ProGuard is also for a waiver of noncompliance. They also did not turn in their annual compliance form on time. They're in year five of 10 of their real property tax abatement and have asked for a waiver. I'm happy to answer any questions. They have since turned in their form, but I'm happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Any questions? Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing for Resolution RC-4221.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I move we close the public hearing for RC-4221.
Second.
There is a motion to close the public hearing for Resolution RC-4221 in a second. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC-42-21 as presented.
Second. There's a motion to approve Resolution RC-4221 in a second. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Counsel to consider Resolution RC-4321 a resolution confirming approval of a waiver of noncompliance concerning a real property tax abatement for TMRZ Holdings. Amy Smith.
Yes, TMRZ Holdings, doing businesses, RZ Automation, is in the final year of their seven-year real property abatement. They also did not turn their form in on time and are asking for a waiver of noncompliance for 21, page 22. They have submitted their compliance form, and this is preliminary approved at your last meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval on this as well.
Any questions? Seeing no questions, I will open up the public hearing for Resolution RC-4321.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
Seeing no one come forward for the public hearing, I would move that we close the public hearing for RC-43-21.
Second.
There's a motion to close the public hearing for Resolution RC-4321 in a second. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. All right. Transfer. Counsel-
Mr. President, I would move approval of Resolution RC-43-21 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Resolution RC-4321 in a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. President, before you go on, I just want to commend Ms. Smith for her perseverance on this. And one thing that, and I had talked to Mr. Eyre a little bit a few weeks ago, we at one point had looked at addressing the whole issue of if you submit information in less than a timely manner, that we might look at some different fees associated with that because of what we've just seen, we've spent two meetings, public hearings, Mrs. Smith, the Economic Development Department, times involved. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I voted for it, but the fact is that we're trying to be good partners with the businesses, and they in turn need to make sure that they're submitting their information in a timely manner. So I'd like to see if we can revisit that, and I'll make it a point to find the fee ordinance and see how we might want to address that. But I just wanted to point that out. I just, it's a lot of work that's involved because of the public process, so food for thought.
I think was it the deadline slid last year a month or something, and then this year it slid forward and it was-
I don't know if that was COVID-related or not, and could have been, but I know we go to great lengths to inform the businesses that they're due, and then if they don't follow through, that's, you know, problematic. So I'll do some homework on that and get back.
Thank you. Counsel to consider transfer TA-0821, an appropriation transfer in the general fund to provide funding for business attraction and marketing services. Jeff Spalding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and I'm covering for Sam tonight. Sometimes he covers for me. And I'm a little bit shorter than him. This item, again, it's really for the Economic Development Department, but it shows it as an appropriation transfer here, but it fits, we've handled it this way because it fits more into the category of the type of thing that we would normally fund out of the contingency appropriations that are part of the normal budget process for things that come up during the year that, you know, were not related to all of the other stuff that we talked about before. Still a very important item, but the funding source here is transferring from contingency versus the additional appropriation request route. And if you have questions about the contract that is being pursued here with this funding, folks from the Economic Development Department can talk to you about that.
Any questions for Mr. Murray? Would you like to speak? You've been here all night. You must say something.
Good evening. Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director for the record. First of all, thank you, counsel, for considering this one-time transfer request. Secondly, over the past 30 to 45 days, we've discussed internally, as well at numerous committee levels, about the opportunity to invest in our business attraction and marketing efforts. Specifically, we firmly believe that, you know, through a well-crafted digital campaign and the right content strategy, we as a city, we as an organization, have the opportunity to reap the benefits of expanding our reach and attracting high-quality business and talent to Noblesville. So with this transfer request before you, $75,000, the Economic Development Department will partner with Blue Sky Commerce, a valued business member in our community right down the street in our downtown, who is represented tonight by Lori Winkler. Thank you, Lori, for showing up tonight. But the intent is to begin immediately strategizing and developing a robust plan from now until the end of the year with expectations of implementing that plan in 2022 over the next three to five years. And this is consistent with the five-year operational plan that the Economic Development Department laid out to this council earlier this year. So extremely excited. I do believe, I remember Councilman O'Connor raising the roof when we discussed this as well in Finance Committee, but we think this is another step in elevating Noblesville. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve transfer TA-08-21 as presented.
Second. Motion to approve transfer TA-0821 in a second. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
There it is.
Nine oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel comments.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. O'Connor.
I wanted to ask the mayor how successful the fundraising was at the Sorey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. O'Connor. You know, as you all know, some 25 years ago, there was an annual event was established to raise money initially for the firefighters' toy and food drive every year. It's become an annual event, and we've continued on the past two years, raising money for charitable foundations. I know many of you were there. On Friday night, we were able to raise over $125,000 for five local charities this year. So thank you to all of you and to all the community members that stepped up. Those were all private dollars raised for private entities. So we're excited about that and appreciate your support.
Great event, and people organized and did a nice job.
Very nice.
I would just like to make a comment about the city staff and all those that put their time and energy into the fireworks festival. Again, we had another wonderful celebration in Noblesville that I think helps to make this community so special. So I think Mrs. Jensen's been very involved with that as well, so please tell her thank you and congratulations.
It's nice to see a robust parade again. Any other comments? Meeting's here.
Thank you.